Good evening. We would like to welcome everyone to our Bountiful City Council work session tonight, Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. And for this work session, we are I'm grateful to our city manager Gary Hill for accompanying me. We went to a session that the governor held, Governor Cox, where he talked about housing affordability. And just a few weeks ago. And so we thought we would share the information that we the slides that they presented at that session. And so Gary, if you don't mind leading us through this discussion, it was really an interesting session. And we'll just go through the slides and we can talk if anybody has comments or wants to has questions or anything. But we'll just go through the slides that we got from them.
Thank you, Mayor. This presentation is largely data that was put together by the Kempsey Gardner Policy Institute and the University of Utah. It was presented by an analyst with the U. And and there wasn't a lot of commentary about the conclusions. There were a couple of places where some conclusions were drawn. And I'll try and to kind of do the same, just share the data and what the charts show. And but wherever you'd like to stop and have a conversation, just let the mayor know or let me know and we'll pause. But the first thing that the governor showed was his housing strategic plan. And this should be familiar to many, but his goal number one is to improve housing availability, affordability, and stability. Goal two, foster community well-being and quality of life. And goal three, seek consensus and evidence-based policy and housing support solutions. And all of that sounds great. If it were that easy, it wouldn't be a problem. And but we appreciate the the approach that the governor has taken to this point, which is trying to get stakeholders together and make data-driven decisions. So the first data set that was shown was this kind of interesting size versus household data from 1950 to through 2020. The chart on the left shows that the average home in 1950 was about 1,200 square feet, average new home in Utah. Whereas by 2020, it had grown to about 2,100 square feet. Whereas over the same period of time, household size is decreasing. We've gone from about 3.7 people per household to 2.5 over that same era. And this background information kind of sets the stage for what we're seeing with housing. Growth has been, as stated, Utah's constant companion. The red line is natural increase, so that's births in the state of Utah. The shaded gray area is net migration with in-migration being above the line, of course, and out-migration being below. And you can see what's to me interesting, since 1950, Utah has not had a year of negative growth. Whether that's a combination of the two, as in most cases, or where net migration was in-migration was low or negative, we had a birth rate that supported still positive growth. Couple of big eras of growth, the 80s, which coincidentally is about the same period in time that Bountiful saw a lot of our development. And then post Olympics, you saw a pretty big increase in population in the state. It's projected, then, that housing demand is not necessarily, is not going to decrease. You know, we have another Olympic Games coming. Sort of the secrets out in Utah, much to my chagrin as I visit the national parks here in the state. People really like Utah. And projections show that we're going to increase by about 275,000 households between now and 2033. So between 2010 and 2013, the growth in employment in the state was 40%, so a 40% increase in jobs, which was best in the nation. But over that same period of time, there was 170% increase in home prices in Utah. You can kind of see where that chart is. So those that are over to the right had the biggest increase in both employment and home prices, which, you know, tracks to a certain degree that as there's demand for jobs, that there's going to be more, there's going to be more demand for homes. Currently, Utah ranks ninth in median sales price of single-family homes, which may surprise some that we are, you know, just below Oregon and in that same category as New York and California and Massachusetts. Of course, some of those are quite a bit higher. But being in the top 10 in sales price is great in certain sectors and really challenging if you're trying to get into a home. I think that the increase in values from the 1970s to the and this was just 2024, to 2024, is pretty startling. And then similarly, we ranked ninth in median household income. So wages have increased as well. But what we're going to see is that wages have not increased at the same rate that the cost of housing has. This chart I found to be particularly interesting when it was presented. So historically, a home was considered affordable if it was three times your annual income. That's what that green area shows, that basically that was affordable. And Utah followed that trend pretty well until just post Olympics, when homes began to fall into that moderately unaffordable range. You can see the effects of the recession. And 2011, 2012 was sort of another valley. But then really post-pandemic, between after 2019, 2020, we have moved in the state into the severely unaffordable category where the median sales price of a home in 2023 was 6.4 times greater than the median household income in the state. This is a chart that shows how that applies to a variety of different cities in the state. Bountiful is about midway there, just above David, the D in David on the bottom. And what it shows is what the median household income was in 2019 and 2024 as a percentage of the average median or the median price of a home. So in Bountiful, currently, the median price of a home is $535,000. Back in 2019, the average income was 4.4% of that. Now it's 5.2. We've become increasingly unaffordable in Bountiful, but so has everyone else. And this isn't limited to Utah. This is pretty much a nationwide trend. And which makes it challenging because there isn't really a silver bullet that we can look at somebody else and say, if we do this one thing or these two things, we're going to solve the problem. It's a very complex problem with a lot of different levers to pull. Interesting slide here, the cost of renting versus owning a single-family home along the Wasatch Front. So in relatively similar for a period of time with rentals being more expensive. But post-pandemic, a big change in the cost of a single-family rent versus home payment, which won't be a surprise to anybody that purchased a home in that period of time. And this is the income needed to afford the median-priced home in 2024. So and you'll see Davis County is $146,000 in annual income, household income. This assumes a 30% debt-to-income ratio, so about that, again, that three to one amount. In Bountiful specifically, it's about $160,000 is the income needed to afford a median-priced home last year. I'm going to have to talk more slowly because we're just flying through these. This chart shows the percentage of households in the state that can't afford a median-priced home based on price point. So on the far left, what that bar shows, that a home priced at $505,000, 87% of renters can't afford that, a home of that value. Keeping in mind that the median home value in Bountiful is 535 right now. So that number of Bountiful renters would be higher than 87%. We'd be close to 90% of our renters in the city that can't afford to buy a home, a median home. And then we have 82% at $450,000 home and even as low as $350,000, which in many circles is now considered affordable housing. 72% of renters, according to this data, cannot afford the mortgage associated with the home of that value. A point that might seem obvious is that house size drives price. This chart shows that the bigger a house gets, the more expensive it is. And that, again, shouldn't really surprise anyone. But that's, I think, a really interesting data point. To me, the question here is what's driving house size? I will say at the presentation with the governor, the individual who's doing the presentation said that the major factor in determining house size was zoning. I don't agree with that. I think consumer choice has a lot more to do with it than zoning does. But zoning certainly is a factor, but there are a lot of factors. At any rate, I think the challenge with all of this discussion is the temptation to try and point to one factor or another. And if we just solve that one factor, then we're going to solve the housing crisis. And that was an example of that kind of thinking in my mind was that was a conclusion that was drawn that I don't think the data necessarily supports.
Gary, would you share with us the logic behind that idea? The zoning drives house size? What was their logic?
Well, they didn't share any logic at that meeting. He just made the comment and moved on. I think many of us have heard that argument before, which is if cities zoned for more density and smaller homes with smaller setbacks and things like that, that we would, there would naturally be built smaller homes or more homes of a more moderate size. Again, I don't think anybody disputes the fact that there is, that zoning has some implication on the size of homes. But consumer choice sure has a heck of a lot to do with it. So.
And we could zone all we want, lots of tiny lots. But at the end of the day, if developers don't build it and if people don't want to buy it, then then it still doesn't solve the problem.
Well, and I'm going to share my own personal anecdote story. And anyway, it's at least food for thought. But, you know, I grew up, I would say, middle-class. And I don't really know, I know almost nobody, almost nobody, who grew up middle-class that has a smaller home now than they grew up in. Nearly all of us have larger homes. And it wasn't because they weren't available. And I can tell you, in my neighborhood, what happens is if somebody buys a small home, the first thing they do is add on to it. And the major decision factor for folks in my neighborhood, if they're already living in one, is do I move into a bigger house or is it more cost-effective to add on to my existing home? So, which is interesting considering that, you know, household size is going down. And, you know, I don't know what you do about consumer choice. So kind of an interesting question that doesn't get discussed a lot.
Yeah, I think we have a propensity to want bigger and better.
But again, there are many, there are a lot of things that are making homes more expensive. And this data is pretty darn compelling, too. This is your construction costs. And this won't surprise anybody that purchased anything post-pandemic. So those are quarters beginning in 2017. And you can see the big spike in, beginning in 2020, when supply chain issues, that's a term that we just don't use enough anymore, do we? Supply chain issues really affected everybody. And those quarter-over-quarter increases obviously resulted in higher home values. But they increased the cost of everything. You know, we just went through a process as a city where we looked at, we did an increase in water rates because the cost of building or replacing a water reservoir increased, we estimated 40% between 2000 and 2004. So that's had a very significant impact in the ability of builders to build a product that's affordable for many people. And then a couple of slides that I think are more opinion-oriented than data-driven. You'll notice these are the only slides that don't have a data source, so we don't know where these came from. But what was pointed out in the presentation is that some of the local bottlenecks to housing supply is a seeming lack of urgency by some cities to approve homes. And stories were told, anecdotes, some of which are probably true, of cities that take a very, very long time to go from application to entitlement. Whoever put this together said that a good city is 18 to 24 months and that there are difficult cities, which are two to four years long to get that process through. And of course, the degree to which that's true is probably an accurate statement. The question is, you know, how true is that across the board? And something I think we appreciated, the mayor and I also met recently with Steve Waldrup and talked about some of these issues. And Steve Waldrup was a former legislator who's now sort of the affordable housing czar in the state. And he at least has a good understanding that it's difficult to craft legislation that changes bad behavior but doesn't negatively impact good behavior by cities that are doing things well. Some other things that were pointed out, vagueness in interpreting codes and ordinances, inconsistencies in engineering standards and zoning, general plans lacking authority. That's one we ought to spend a couple of minutes talking about. And then additional costs. That idea of general plans lacking authority, where that comes from is some of the legislation that you may remember was proposed over the last couple of years to make general plans binding. So if it's in your, it'd be as though your general plan were a zoning document. You would be entitled to whatever was in your general plan. The mayor and I had a good conversation with Steve about that as well. And at least his opinion, and he thinks the governor's opinion, is that there's not a lot of traction for that idea because, as we discussed with him, the first problem is, what will happen is, general plans will simply become zoning documents. They will be drafted in such a way that they're no longer forward-thinking. They're going to be draft, if they're going to be entitlement documents, then they're going to be drafted by city councils in a way that will get exactly what they want right now, which completely takes away the incentive of having a long-term plan. It was also pointed out that if that was made a requirement, it would, I think Steve's comment was, it would take 10 years to get everybody up to have a new general plan, which is probably accurate. We know how long it's taking us to do ours. And that's just the general plan side. That's not the zoning code changes that we want to make. But.
I feel like it would really water down general plans and make them not aspirational, which is really problematic. We want to be able to look to the future and be aspirational in our general plans.
Yeah, so it kind of would defeat the purpose of general plans. But it sounds like, at least this year, that there's not a lot of support for that in leadership circles, which I think is positive because it's important that cities plan. It's important that we have aspirations and then that we be able to change based upon circumstances. And then this last slide in this presentation was pointing out what some cities do well, building relationships and trust. I'm assuming here, meaning between stakeholders. Predictable and consistent process and using creativity to overcome barriers ahead of time, all of which translates, on that last one, to shorter approval timeframes and things. So that was the gist of this presentation, which was probably about a third of the whole meeting. There was another third that was kind of a roundtable discussion between city leaders and another third that was roundtable discussion between members of the development community, if I remember right. Anyway, that is the data that is being shared and discussed among some of the decision-makers. And I think it's pretty fascinating. The challenge is then, the conclusions that are being drawn from it. And as we, one of the things that the mayor and I talked about with Steve Waldrup was the fear that I have that in an effort to do something, we are pulling the wrong levers, making permanent changes to things that actually won't make a difference that will come at the expense of quality of life in the community. Of course, the other side, the other spectrum, the other side of the coin here is the challenge that many of us are facing, which is a lack of support from the community to change anything. You know, our general plan really is forward-looking in a lot of ways and anticipates there's going to be growth happening. We've seen the numbers. We know that growth is coming to the state. And so it's a challenge when you have community members that are unwilling to consider any change at all. And that's also pretty universal. That's not limited to Utah or red states or blue states or anybody else. It's pretty, it's pretty universal. So happy to answer any questions. I don't know that I have answers other than maybe to go back over, look at some of the charts and discuss them, council.
Thanks. That was a great overview. And it's good for, I'm really glad that we could share this with the whole council. When we were there, I thought this is important for us to, as a council, to talk about. And, you know, it's probably nothing really new. All of you know that we have issues with housing affordability here. And this, but it's nice to have data, right, instead of just stories. And so I appreciated the presentation. What questions or comments do you have, council?
Mayor, I've got a question. First of all, thank you for bringing this information to us and presenting it. It's really super important, obviously. I'm just wondering, this meeting was convened by the governor and utilizing the data and reports that have been put together by the Gardner Institute. Did the governor have any, I mean, I see the part that said what some cities are doing well. And but were there any specific asks? Or do you anticipate there will be other meetings where there will be, you know, more like taking this information and then seeing, how do we, you know, suggestions for operationalizing this on the city level? Were there any asks?
So I'll let you speak to, if you remember any specific asks. I know that out of that meeting and continuing through other conversations that have been happening, the league has a housing subgroup, the Utah League of Cities and Towns, where we're talking about what, we're talking about legislation, we're talking about what cities can do, what, where we can pair our interests as cities with what the state is after. So there's, I know there's a working group that continues through the league where we're talking about what can be done, what cities should do to be good partners in this effort. Obviously, cities don't build housing. But what are the things that we can do to help? So that work continues where we're meeting and discussing ideas. Do you remember other specifics or?
One of the specific asks, which I think also will not be a surprise, was that not changing was not an option for the governor. It was that everybody needs to make some accommodations if we're going to help homes become less expensive. But beyond that, there weren't a lot of specific asks. I think there was sort of the general plea of, don't be obstructionist, continue to work. But there was a lot of compliments made to the league and how the league has tried to be, has been at the table and tried to be a good partner throughout. You know, Kate's on the board of directors of the league and could probably talk a little bit more about it. But my experience there was that Utah is much better off than many states when it comes to conversations between local government and the state, that we aren't being preemptively, there's a lot of preemptions that are not happening in the state, such as minimum lot size or things of that nature, which are pretty draconian steps. There's been a willingness to sit and be at the table, even though I don't know that we love all the outcomes. Kate, I don't know what you would add there. You've, this is probably, this gets talked about every meeting you're at, I know.
This is probably the most robust topic that the League of Cities and Towns takes on, from the staff side, from the board side. In our June board meeting, this was the majority topic, housing. For those that haven't ever served on the Legislative Policy Committee and don't get to spend as much time at the state capitol, during this time period, you know, the legislative interim time period, there's a really robust back and forth that takes place in what's called the Land Use Task Force. It's not an official body, it's an unofficial body that's been convened between representatives from the Association of Realtors, from the Building Development Community, from the League of Cities and Towns, from the Association of Counties. And I've watched it happen for 20-plus sessions now. But each side starts with a list of the things they think ought to happen in this housing space. And there's usually a lot of distance between those lists. And then through the interim process and then as the legislature takes up certain things in those interim committee meetings, often there's a handful that are identified as things that were, you know, maybe both sides can pick a couple of these to work on. That the extreme lists each group started with are, you know, the start of World War III housing legislation. And so it's a really robust group. Different staff and elected officials from different cities serve as negotiators on that, on that committee. And then lots of subcommittees are formed. And so there's several robust subcommittees that are meeting right now. In addition, as part of this effort, the governor has announced his Build Council, which has its first meeting at the end of July, on July 22nd. And I believe he's viewing that as sort of like his, he had a Unified Economic Opportunity Commission, UEOC was the acronym that met for a few years where he felt like there needed to be strategic guidance and governance on economic development issues. And so that group convened for a few years and then has has been closed and they've moved on. And he's formed a new Build Council where he wants to kind of give the same emphasis and effort. And so I believe some of these ideas that the Land Use Task Force is talking about, some of these research elements from the Kemp Gardner Institute will all be part of those discussions and then will come forward in this next legislative session. I will say there's also, and this is true of the last league board meeting, finding ways that groups that have just different perspectives, because our roles and responsibilities are different, can work together in a positive way is really important. The League of Cities and Towns spends a significant amount of time dealing with anecdotal stories of quote-unquote "bad" cities. And at the last league board meeting, we had an executive committee meeting and we were given a list of the were given a list of the quote-unquote "latest list" of bad cities, who often, when you kind of go through what it is the complaint is, you'll find often there's an incomplete application, or there's a weird slope issue, or, you know, there are often reasons or methods to the madness of why a project is not moving forward. Sometimes there's a silly reason, and the League of Cities and Towns can help with expertise and things to move things along. But we do spend a significant amount of time having to chase down the anecdotal stories. And I do find that personally frustrating, that instead of talking about ways we can move forward, that a lot of my time on the league board is spent kind of helping get to the bottom of a story. And then usually, it's just not as fantastic as you were led to believe on the first telling. I mean, like any good game of telephone, it's a really great story by the fourth or fifth telling. So, there's always a lot going on in the space. It's very robust, and obviously, a chunk of our dues, and for those that serve on the Legislative Policy Committee, and staff time, you know, Gary's dedicated a lot of staff time over the years. The league has asked for a lot of help with research, and I know Francisco, and Amber, and Lloyd, and others at different times have helped contribute to that research body, that just good data, I think, makes for much better policy decisions, so that when we're playing with all of the different levers that go into housing, we're playing with them not based on anecdotal stories, but on real good data about why road widths are what road widths are, so that a fire truck can turn around. And, you know, just thinking of recent things we've dealt with, you know, the reason you size a stormwater system, the way you size it, because afterwards, it's really expensive to fix when it doesn't handle the runoff and people's homes are flooded. And so you want to balance that with things that also are thoughtful about, you know, the people who call this home and want to call this place home. So, that was a long anecdotal roundabout, too. The League of Cities and Towns is deeply engaged in this, as are several people from our team and other teams.
Thanks.
Amen.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Mayor, could I?
Yes.
I couldn't agree more that this needs to be decided on data and not on vague anecdotes. It's frustrating that it seems like legislative leadership wants to steamroll cities who are seriously giving an effort to be good actors, under the guise of forcing the bad actors to comply, if there really are these bad actors. And frankly, I know of a couple of bad actors where family property is located, and they need help. And the legislature should do something. The governor should lead out somehow to fix those broken problems, as we're all trying to make changes that'll benefit the entire process. I agree with the statement that we can't do nothing. We also have to change. But I don't agree, I'm really disconcerted by the idea that we're going to be steamrolled based on unsubstantiated vague anecdotes that just get a life at the legislature and hold on. So, that's my whiny response.
Thanks for that. Any other comments?
I've got a -- oh, go ahead, Beth.
Just wondering, Mayor and Gary, as you listen to this, as you were part of this presentation and discussion, did you have ideas come to you about what we can do in Bountiful to help with this crisis?
What came to my mind was actually the work that we are doing on the general plan to look at increasing density in places that it makes sense. You know, what that means is different, a little bit different for everyone, but I think the council's been pretty thoughtful about trying to plan for a change in properties over time, based on access to services, access to transportation. I think that was one thing that I thought about, that I was proud of Bountiful for, that, you know, we've done several things proactively. I think the ADU ordinance that we adopted several years ago was an example of that. But it's very hard to change the nature of a community that's 95% built out. And I appreciate that Steve Waldrop, in our conversations, recognizes that, that there are communities like us, or like a sandy, that there's not a lot, that we don't have a lot of wide-open green spaces where we can create new development and do things differently. And the solutions for us are going to be different than they are going to be for Saratoga Springs, or a West Haven, where there's still space to grow. But that's the challenge with legislation, right, is it doesn't always take into account the different nature of communities. So, I don't have a great answer for that. One thing that did come to mind is, in our conversation with Steve Waldrop, however, was a project that he pointed out in West Weber, that county, that we couldn't necessarily do here. It was a fairly large project of many, many, many acres. And they were all single-family homes, and the prices were too high, basically, for anyone to be considered affordable. So they worked together with the commissioners, who, this was an incorporated county, and with the developer, and the proposal was brought up to actually increase density by adding smaller homes throughout the entire development, rather than like just a neighborhood of smaller homes. And first, people were very reluctant to consider that. More density is exactly what they thought they didn't want. But what ended up happening is they were able to, the developers were able to afford to build these smaller homes with -- and they had a few deed restrictions. Initially, they could only be sold to people who, remember, Mayor, if I remember right, it was city, it was teachers, it was...
First responders.
First responders. And it really worked well for everybody. The question we asked Steve was, you know, if they had any data on, you know, what size of a development of that nature would be pencil-able? You know, how many units would you have to have of both at-market homes and maybe below-market homes? And the point that he made, that I think is reasonable, too, is that the best way to accommodate, in his opinion, multi, or excuse me, moderate-income housing, is mixed in with everything else, as opposed to having it all in one location here and everything else there. It tends to help everybody a little bit more. But those are things that the council's considering, that you're looking at with the general plan, with cottage courts, and with some of the planned rezones. So, I think Bountiful's doing well.
I love the question because so often, people are demanding, "Do this," or "do that," or "don't do this." And so the question, "What can we do?" I think that's a good question. And, yeah, I think it's important that we do consider what we can do, and it is different. We're different than Park City, different than Logan, different than, you know, every city's unique. But surely, there are some things that we can do. And the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, where maybe you have a basement apartment, and you want to make it into a mother-in-law apartment, well, that's a really low impact to your neighborhood. But it, in some cases, helps someone who's maybe an aging person to be able to afford to stay in their home, and also brings a little vitality to the neighborhood. And so I think it kind of helps keep the fabric of our neighborhoods, and also enriching them a little. And so it's really good for us to consider, what are the things that we can do? And I remember years ago, this topic coming up, affordability in housing, and I just remember thinking, "We don't build homes. Why do we care about this? We want our property values to go up because it's good for all of us that live here." And so I just remember thinking, "That's fine. It's not affordable. Oh, well, go live somewhere else." But the more I dug into it, the more I learned, the more I saw, I really do care because I want our police officers to be able to live here, I want our teachers to be able to live in our community, I want my kids, my kids, to be able to afford to live nearby. And we have better neighborhoods when we have a mix of people that are living here. And so it doesn't change, you know, there is only so much we can do as a city. We do not build housing as a city. But I love the question, "What can we do?" And I think there are things, as we consider the general plan, that we're adopting, you know, what do we want to allow and where? And so it's just good to consider those possibilities.
Agenda item 10 on your tonight, in the regular meeting, is an example of this, where a recommendation has come forward from the Planning Commission to increase the height of accessory structures. And one of the main reasons for that was because by adding a little bit more height to those structures, it allows a second story to be big enough to be inhabited. Now, taller always means neighbors get more concern, so paired with that, ordinance is a recommendation that the taller the building is, the further back from the property line it is. That's the intent of that ordinance. But it's an example of what can we do, it's something, some good thinking that's going on in our community to add responsible density.
Mayor, if I may, I want to just preface this question by also referencing the general plan. Having been involved with that over the last couple of years, that's been a lot of really good work. And I think that we have been forward-thinking and having kind of those visioning ideas of where we want and hope that Bountiful can go. And I think just hearing this report, you know, talking about pulling the levers of policy, and does that come at the expense of quality of life? And I just think that those things are not mutually exclusive, and two things can be true. We can pull levers, and we can still maintain quality of life. And I guess I would just hope, and challenge us, that as we do move forward with, I think, what is a really robust general plan, especially in comparison to the 2009 general plan, this is much more comprehensive, much more robust, and I hope that we can really move forward with intentionality and, you know, and purpose, and actually codify these things, so it's, you know, we're not accused of having a general plan lacking authority. And I get that it's not authority, it's not code, but it should be something that, I mean, again, looking at something, you know, if our general plan does kind of give that idea of where do we want to go, if something doesn't fit in with our general plan guidelines or visioning. So I guess that all leads up to the question, which is, when will our general plan update be in front of the Planning Commission? And when we have kind of finished our work here, and now we know that it's going to the Planning Commission, and when will that be happening? And when will we be having those kind of final discussions, so we can get moving forward?
Francisco will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're looking at making it available for public review next week. And then there will be a 30-day period where folks can review it and provide comments to the Planning Department before it goes to the Planning Commission. So we're looking at about, a little bit more than a month before it gets to the Planning Commission.
Does that timeframe sound right?
Yes.
So we can anticipate that probably before sometime, maybe even in September, we could be having this back after a public hearing at Planning Commission, we could be having that back here in the fall.
Depends on how long the Planning Commission keeps it.
I'm looking at two of our awesome planning commissioners right now. I'm glad they're here.
Great. Any other comments or questions?
There's one thing I probably should have mentioned in the league's efforts, and this may not be a tool that helps Bountiful, but in some of the greenfield cities that Gary mentioned, where there's still a lot of undeveloped land, one of the challenges that has been kind of universally identified is infrastructure, infrastructure costs to put in water and sewer and power. All those things are incredibly expensive. And sometimes what's been identified is maybe adding a significant new development is going to require a new water treatment plant, or something like that. And that can be, you know, tens of millions of dollars that a community would need to bond for. So, one of the things that Steve Waldrop, in his role with the governor's office, has been looking at is ways to help finance and do some of those really significant infrastructure projects that are the key to unlocking big chunks of land to significant housing developments. Again, this isn't necessarily one that's going to be impactful for Bountiful, because we don't have large areas of undeveloped land, and it's not really something probably that even impacts our immediate neighbors. But it's part of that, you know, overall puzzle, is we look at some of those greenfield cities and just funding those tremendous costs, which, you know, we know what it takes just to replace a water tank. Imagine if you were having to build a significant section of your city's culinary water system to add, you know...
That's a great point.
Five or 10,000 new housing units from scratch. So, I failed to mention that, that that's been a big discussion point between development community, the league, the governor's office, the legislature, just how to figure out that part of the Rubik's Cube, too.
And a good example of things that cities are having to think about, as we're thinking about growth, for sure. So, thanks. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Or... Okay. Well, thanks. Good discussion. Important topic. And we'll just have a quick break before our 7 o'clock regular city council meeting. Thanks.